We will call the October 25th, 2018 meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Absent is Dwayne. Seated for Dwayne is Kim. Absent is Eliana. Seated for Eliana is Tracy? No, take that. Ruth Ann, okay. I'm trying to use my chi chi here. And then seated for John is Tracy. So that's us. Here are the seven surviving members. Anyway, are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
Were you going to mention something about John?
John?
I was going to do it during Planning Commission Items, but I can do it now. Do it then?
Definitely.
Okay.
No, sir, no additions or deletions.
Approval of the minutes. Are there any additions to or corrections to the Planning Commission meeting minutes from October 11th?
Nope.
No.
No.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from October 11th, 2018. Signal your approval by yes.
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 I'm staying.
Next item, public hearing. Lincoln Professional Park has been continued. I think somebody, you have a motion next to you. Can somebody make that motion?
I move the Planning Commission continue the zoning hearing to November the 8th, 2018.
Second it.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by Eric, that Planning Commission continue the zoning hearing on the Lincoln Professional Park to November 8th, 2018. Next item. We all, yes. Signal your approval by yes, sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
My button does not appear to be working. I'm voting yes.
Okay. All right. Next item, item eight. A public hearing on a resolution number 18-078, a resolution to adopt the Town of Parker Complete Streets policy. We will open the public hearing at 7:03. Mary? Okay. Okay, Mary.
Thank you, and good evening Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is the public hearing for the Complete Streets policy. According to the National Complete Streets Coalition, complete streets are defined as streets for everyone. They're streets designed and operated to enable safe access for all users regardless of age, ability, or mode of transportation. Why complete streets for Parker? Adoption of this policy supports, promotes, and implements important transportation policies that currently exist, also guiding principles, goals, and strategies of the Parker 2035 Master Plan, the Main Street Master Plan, the Parker Transportation Master Plan, as well as promotes the town's strategic goals. Also, complete streets, that approach has been around since the early 2000s, and there are over 1,400 adopted complete streets policies in the U.S., including some Colorado communities. Benefits, according to the National Complete Streets Coalition research, potential benefits include health, walkable-bikable neighborhoods support increased physical activity and mode choice, mobility. Complete streets projects encourage multimodal travel, usually resulting in more biking, walking, and transit trips. Safety, according to a Federal Highway Administration review, streets designed with pedestrians in mind, such as sidewalks, crossing islands, better bus stop placement, traffic calming measures, and even treatments for travelers with disabilities, those all help improve pedestrian safety. Economy, complete streets are very important to economic development. Complete street projects are typically supportive of increased employment, net new businesses, possibly even higher property values, and new private investment, all according to the National Coalition of Complete Streets. And cost, many treatments such as adding countdown clocks, pedestrian signal timing, adding curb bulbouts that you see even in downtown here, those sort of items can improve the transportation network capacity and efficiency for little or no cost. And then lastly, congestion. Complete streets improvements oftentimes can reduce congestion and improve travel times by providing alternative transportation options such as walking, biking, and taking transit. Complete streets are safe for all users, but it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. Rather, complete streets recognizes that each street is unique, should respond to the community context, and therefore require different treatments. So while a complete street in a rural area may look quite different than one in an urban area, both are designed to balance safety, mobility, and convenience for everyone using the road. Parker's streets make up 15% of our land area and, of course, are a vital part of our livable, active community. Our streets serve multiple functions such as access, multimodal mobility, economic development, public gathering spaces, support public safety, and also help to create community character. They emphasize safety and comfortability in design and operation, are part of a multimodal transportation network, the overall network, and are context-sensitive to the surrounding environment. The town's roadway design criteria manual already includes many complete streets elements such as sidewalks and bike lanes. Adopting this complete streets policy will formalize and further strengthen the town's commitment to plan, design, and operate our roadways to ensure safe access for all users. Additionally, this policy will provide guidance for implementation of complete streets best practices. Community development staff worked collaboratively with our representatives from Public Works and Engineering, Parks and Rec, and the Police Department, as well as our transportation consultant, Michael Baker International. Development of this policy was informed by review of other complete streets policy, including national, state, and local communities. We were also assisted by the publication you see on the screen there, "The Elements of a Complete Streets Policy." That document is an industry-standard publication by the National Complete Streets Coalition, and the Coalition promotes the development of, development and implementation of complete streets policies and professional practices. So the project had three goals. They incorporate complete streets best practices in order to balance the needs of all users in the transportation network, to create a safe and efficient multimodal system that measures, that includes measurable performance standards. And lastly, the policy recommends 11 strategies for implementation of the policy utilizing, on your screen it says, the five Cs: communication, collaboration, culture, creativity, and commitment. The document to be adopted is the policy, which includes the section's vision and commitment, exceptions, implementation strategies, and evaluation metrics. The process also generated a document we're calling Supporting Documents that provides supplemental information that inform the policy. So it's just a document that we have kind of put together with all of our research throughout this process. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve Resolution 18-078 to adopt the Parker Complete Streets policy. And Carolyn and I are here with, or for any questions you might have.
Questions for Mary and Carolyn?
I'm assuming this is just a best practices and kind of a guidance document. This doesn't, this won't-
That is correct.
... limit, or, you know, if things need to change, it's not a limit, it's not a limiting document.
You're, you're correct. It's a living document, a policy document, not regulatory, but a guidance document, yes.
Further questions? As this is a public hearing, we will open the floor to public comment. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Further questions for Carolyn or Mary?
Nope.
No.
And then we will close the public hearing at 7:11. Planning Commissioner discussion?
I think this is going to make our community much more user-friendly. I think it's going to prove to be an important element in maintaining the hometown feel Parker has as we continue to grow and redevelop.
Thank you.
Yeah, also, I think this is a great direction to go in, and I was looking at WalkScore.com at Parker's Walk Score is 22, so hopefully this can help improve that score.
Exactly. Baby steps.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree with, with both Ruth Ann and Kelly. I think increasing the acts, the access and the accessibility to our public and increasing the safety to the community is a positive, so I'm, I'm for.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the town staff's done a very good job at structuring the needs for all the users, and adopting this complete street policy reflects the town's commitment to safe and convenient access for all users.
I agree. I just think it's a pretty good best practices document, and hopefully it'll push us to do a little bit more alternative things on our streets.
I have nothing to add. I'm in, I'm in full agreement with everybody.
Yeah, I would agree as well. I think the, the approach to the multimodal transportation and, as Kelly said, improving the walkability score, those are all noble goals. So do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council adopt the Town of Parker Complete Streets policy.
Second.
It's, it's been moved by Eric, seconded by Kelly, that Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve Resolution 18.078 to adopt the Parker Complete Streets policy. Signify your approval by yes.
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 Okay. Next item is a public hearing on Ordinance Number 3.326.1. It's a bill for an ordinance to amend Section 13.10.200 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the Town of Parker architectural and design standards for commercial, industrial, and multifamily projects. We will open the public hearing at 7:14. Carolyn?
One moment, please. Good evening Chairman and Planning Commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting a recommendation to approve updates to the town's commercial, industrial, and multifamily design standards, also known as the CIMF. The purpose of the CIMF is to provide direction for quality building design. It serves as a tool to evaluate development applications, and it helps create livable neighborhoods versus just a development. The CIMF was adopted in 1999 and last updated in January of 2017. The town contracted with Urban Design Associates to update, update the CIMF. New design standards for multifamily were completed this year, and the commercial component is targeted for completion in the first quarter of 2019. The proposed updates for the CIMF are interim until all standards have been completed. Once they're complete, they will be combined into one document, and that will replace the current CIMF. Community outreach efforts for this project included three design workshops that were held in 2017. Two were focused on multifamily design and one on commercial design. Visual preference surveys were conducted, and the project team held a development tour bus, bus tour that many of you attended. The project team also held meetings with the Technical Advisory Committee and the Development Liaison Committee for input to the CIMF update. The proposed changes to the CIMF include updates to Chapter 2, how to use the design standards. Chapters 3 and 4, minor edits, include minor edits to the commercial and industrial sections, and Chapter 5 includes a complete rewrite of the chapter. Chapter 2, how to use the design standards, has been updated to include the, the current master plan land use map, which depicts the locations of centers and corridors throughout the town. Minor revisions to Chapters 3 and 4 include clarification language to articulate building design for commercial and industrial developments. Chapter 5 includes a complete rewrite of the multifamily design standards. Brief highlights of the new multifamily design standards include key, key steps to design multifamily developments, site design standards, building composition, orientation, and block layout, and the design of publicly accessible spaces. The new design standards feature multifamily building types for a variety of units. They also will address building composition, building orientation schemes, and development block layout to create livable, a livable neighborhood environment. The new standards also address preferred ways to front buildings on different street, types of streets in Parker. This is an example of a multifamily development that's been designed with the new design standards. The site plan on the left shows the original design using the old CIMF where the parking lots drive the design of the building locations. The image on the right shows the same development that was redesigned using the new multifamily design standards. The revised site plan features buildings oriented towards the street or a greenway, and the site has been broken down into development blocks which create a neighborhood feel. The CIMF will continue to align with the LDO and other regulatory documents. With these changes, town staff will be able to further implement master plan, the master plan vision and for quality design. Staff recommends that Planning Commission move to recommend that Town Council approve the 2018 updates to the commercial, industrial, and multifamily design standards.
Questions for Carolyn? All right. Well, since this is a public hearing, we will open to the public for comment. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Further questions for Carolyn? We will close the public hearing at 7:19. Planning Commissioner discussion?
I'm happy to see this is finally coming to fruition. I know this has been a long process, and I'm, I'm happy to see that it's finally here. I'm in full support. I really like how this has been put together.
Great, thank you.
I was particularly impressed with the detail. I think the use of the case studies, the checklists, is going to be a boon to developers and the public as they look at what's going to be going in, in their own neighborhoods. I was very happy to see the requirement of inclusion of public art in the multiple, the large multi, multiple family development. So I thought you guys did a really excellent job with this.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
I agree with you both.
Yeah, I think the proposed changes will, will improve the quality of the developments and make them appear much, much better than in the past, and more, more like neighborhood-like and friendly.
Yeah, and that's one of the parts I really liked in the standards, where it said, creating neighborhoods versus developments and integrating them really into existing neighborhoods rather than a multifamily over there and single family over there. No, it's all part of one community, so I, I like those principles in there. And I, I think these design standards will help show, maybe can help people not be as afraid of density and show that when it's done well, it's not a scary thing.
Absolutely.
So I think that will help with that. I think staff did a really good job with putting these together.
Great, thank you. I agree. I really don't have anything to add. It was great to be a part of that process, and I think we're going to see some great improvements.
I agree with my fellow commissioners, and certainly that having been involved with it since we kind of started this process, as Eric says, to see it finally come to fruition is, it's really cool, and thanks to all the staff's work on getting this accomplished. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the November 19th, 2018 updates to the commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential design standards.
Second.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by Ruth Ann, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the November 19th, 2018 updates to the commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential design standards. Signify your approval by yes.
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 Worked that time.
Button worked.
You're back.
Oh.
Missed the chairs.
All right. Item B, ordinance, the ordinance number 3.01.116, or 160, oh no. This is a bill for an ordinance repeal Section 13.10.160 to amend Section 13.10.161 and to renumber Section 13.10.161 to 13.10.160 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning residential design minimums. We will open the public hearing at 7:22. Stacy?
Good evening Chairman and Planning Commission. To put that all into short, this is the residential design minimum. So the proposal tonight is to amend the town's land development ordinance to update the requirements for new single-family and paired units or duplex development within the town. So in 1998, the town adopted Section 13.10.160, which is called the residential design minimums. Then in 2000, the town adopted Section 13.10.161, which is also residential design minimums, but that only applied to developments after February 20th, 2000. These sections were adopted to require single-family homes along the same side of a street or public open space in the town to be designed to provide a varied street scene and to eliminate the reuse of identical or substantially similar buildings in close proximity to each other. The current regulations apply only to single-family detached homes and require identical or similar buildings not be repeated more frequently than every sixth house along the same side of any street. Home builders are required to submit building elevations. Each elevation is evaluated based on several design variations. These variations include architectural variety, breaking down building form and massing, and using building, building elements and palettes to create a distinct differentiation between structures. The proposed amendment to the land development ordinance includes three parts. Part one is to eliminate Section 13.10.160, as this section applies to the construction of new homes within subdivisions approved prior to February 20th, 2000. Subdivisions approved prior to February 20th, 2000 have been completely built out. Therefore, this section no longer applies. Part two is to renumber Section 13.10.161 to 13.10.160. Part three is the major modifications to the existing section, 13.10.161. This is to bring the section up to date. Major changes to this code include updating the process to reflect the town's current electronic system, updating the graphics explaining the modifications to fit current architecture, and then expanding exterior surface material schemes which allows the addition of different architectural elements to differentiate one elevation from another. This section was also updated to apply to paired units or duplexes, which were not included previously. Duplexes are required to meet the same standards as single-family detached homes, but the same building cannot be repeated more frequently than every fourth building. Here is an example of a duplex development that is currently being constructed within the town, and they met these new standards. So this proposal brings the code up to date, makes the process easier to follow, and allows for additional builder options. It aligns the requirements of the new multifamily design guidelines, which were just proposed, and then staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve Ordinance 3.01.116 regarding the residential design minimums. This concludes staff presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Stacy?
Nope.
No.
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 All right. As this is a public hearing, we will open the hearing to public comment. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Further questions? We will close the public hearing at 7:26. Commissioner discussion?
It's pretty straightforward. I'm in support. This is well-aligned with what we just passed here shortly.
I think the changing of the illustrations and including that was a really important thing to do. I'm glad you did that. You did a very thorough job.
Yeah, I think the changes make good sense and hopefully make the communities look less like a cutty cook, cut, cookie cutter homes throughout the, the community.
Hey, I appreciate the fact you're giving the builders the ability to change the exterior, you know, without necessarily changing the complete architectural type of the home, making it, you know, Victorian to modern and being, you know, the same but yet not exactly identical.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to apply the same standards to duplexes as well. Makes sense. I really like the graphics in there. I think they're very clear. It shows you what it's talking about. You don't have to guess. So I'm fully in support of this, and good job to staff.
I agree. I don't have anything to add.
Yes, again, kudos to staff for work on a good project here. Do we have a motion?
I don't think anybody wants to read that. I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve Ordinance Number 3.01.116 to repeal Section 13.10.160, to amend Section 13.10.161, and to renumber Section 13.10.161 to 13.10.160 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning residential design minimums.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Eric, seconded by Rich, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve Ordinance Number 3.01.116 to repeal Section Point, 1.13.10.160 to amend Section 13.10.161 and to renumber Section 13.10.161 to 13.10.160 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning residential design minimums. If you have any breath left, signify your approval by yes.
Yes.
Next item is an ordinance. Item C is a public hearing on an ordinance number 3.01.117 to amend off-street parking and internal circulation of the Parker Municipal Code. We will open the public hearing at 7:29. Carolyn?
This presentation is an overview of the recommendation to approve the update to 13.0- 13.06.050 off-street parking and internal circulation code from the land development ordinance. Our consultant Troy Russ from Kimley Horn is here tonight to answer any technical questions you may have. Town council adopted the, the downtown parking study and plan in May of 2017. Near-term strategies from this plan recommend establishing parking standards for downtown to ensure that the new, that new development has adequate parking. Town council directed staff to implement this strategy. The town hired Kimley Horn to provide analysis of existing parking code and draw, and draft new parking requirements for downtown. The new standards will apply to the greater downtown district and five centers with minor changes town-wide. Proposed changes town, town-wide include an update to the shared parking agreement, and also the parking ratio calculation will be based on net leasable area for non-residential developments. Currently, parking ratios are calculated by using gross floor area, which includes elevator shafts, hallways, stairs, building entry areas, sidewalks, and lobbies within a building envelope. The net leasable area will just include usable space only for the parking ratio calculation. This is an example of a gross, what's included in the gross floor area. And then this shows what we're going to be going to, which is including, calculating space just for net leasable areas only. Changes to the parking on the east side of Parker Road will apply to a portion of the town center to the east and the Pike's Peak and historic centers. The new parking standards will require off-street parking with new development, and will allow parking exemptions for the first 3,000 square feet or less of building, of the building footprint of a new development to accommodate small additions and infill projects in downtown. Changes to parking on the west side of Parker Road will apply to a portion of the town center to the west and the market and 20 Mile centers. Changes include parking adjustments for mixed-use developments to reflect peak hour parking demands, allowance for site-specific parking studies to determine parking demands, and transportation demand management programs that allow parking credits and reductions based on a site's proximity to multimodal options such as walking, biking, or transit. Changes to the west side of Parker Road will allow credit for on-street parking, and the town will retain the option to allow partial credit for proposed large-scale developments with on-street parking adjacent to a site. We'll also have remote shared parking that will provide an off-site parking agreement with another property within 500 feet proximity to a site. Staff recommends that planning commission recommend town council approve the ordinance to update section 13.06.050 off-street parking and internal circulation. Are there any questions? I have Troy Russ here to answer questions you may have.
Questions for Carolyn or Troy?
No.
I have a question. As you were figuring out this out, what was the average distance that people are going to be expected to walk now in downtown historic district area when they park? I mean, sometimes you'll get a parking space right where you want it, but recognizing that we're trying to not over-provide parking spaces, how far do you expect people to walk for parking?
So there's range. Troy Russ with Kimley Horn on that track. Just I turned my on. Thank you. The question about walking distance is, this parking requirement expects off-site parking to be provided onsite, or it allows a shared parking allowance up to 500 feet away.
Okay.
Now, with special evaluation, it could be considered up to 1,000 feet away, but there's, it has to get special approval from the planning department to allow that through special studies. So just for your reference, parking studies, mass transit studies, and walking studies sort of use three numbers.
Mm-hmm.
The first number is 500 feet. That is the critical number. That's where 70% of the American public will walk 500 feet. So if you think of a ring, a ring road around a mall, the ring road is always 500 feet from the store, because retailers know how far their customers will walk. Now, once you're inside the mall, we know with a, with appropriate walking environment, people will walk up to a five-minute walk. And so you see anchor stores a quarter mile apart, 1,300 feet, always. That's a five-minute walk. And, and then if there's a clear destination, the last distance we expect people to walk is up to a half a mile, but that's in rare situations where there's clear destinations such as a transit stop or something very deliberate. So 500 to a quarter mile is really the distance we expect the American public to walk.
Thank you.
Further questions?
No.
Nope.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, we will open it up to public comment. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Any further questions? We will close the public hearing at 7:35. Commissioner discussion?
Well, I guess I'm glad that parking is being, you know, looked at. We have some serious parking issues, or the public perception is there's a lot of parking issues. So I'm glad you're looking at doing different things, especially some shared parking, but also taking away parking requirements for nonusable space just to load up the town with parking. So I think it's a, I think it's a pretty common sense approach.
I think these regulations will help right-size our parking in the town so that we're sure we have enough where, where it truly is needed and not an overabundance. That photo, that target parking lot is very telling to me. So if we can stop doing that, I think we can make better use of some of our land in the town. So fully support implementing these standards.
I have nothing to add. I, I'm in support.
I, I was able to attend the public overview that you guys did a few weeks back on the parking study. And I think staff and Troy did a really great job in just bringing the topic and opening it up to the public and giving that educational component. So I, I'm for it. I appreciate that.
I, I like the way it's been done to, to create, I think you're using best practices of current. And so the fact that we didn't have some parking requirements in some parts of town, and now we've got it, the whole town covered, and we're using current best practices, I support this ordinance.
And I agree with everything fellow commissioners have stated about the parking. I'm for it.
Yeah, I support this as well. I agree with Kim that it will address, you know, a certainly perceived problem. It, it won't address Parker days, so just so we get that, just so we get that out there.
Right, yeah.
So, anyway. Do we have a motion?
I move the planning commission recommend town council approve the ordinance to update section 13.06.050 off-street parking and internal circulation.
Second.
It's been moved by Kim, seconded by Eric, that planning commission recommend town council approve the ordinance to update section 13.06.050 off-street parking and internal circulation. Signify your approval by yes.
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 We have one item, planning commission item. Rosemary and I were in receipt of a letter from Commissioner John Howe resigning his position on the planning commission. Without going into a lot of details, but both John and his wife are having health issues, and he really needs to dedicate his time to that. And so he will be missed. We certainly hope that town council will do something to recognize John's service to this community and to the Parker community at large for the many several years. And so at a future meeting, we will, he was the vice chairman. We'll do some elections to replace that position, but we'll wait till Dwayne and Eliana get back, hopefully, and do that. So again, Godspeed to John and Becky. So any further items?
No, sir, they're not.
All right, then we will adjourn at 7:39.